Hey, good evening, everybody. It's six thirty-three. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Norwalk Common Council for the purpose of presenting presentation of the operating budget. First, I apologize. There's some misinformation that was put out earlier today and I believe yesterday afternoon relative to this being public participation. We've been following the same process for many, many years. There will be two public opportunities for the public to address the budget on February twenty-third before the Common Council Finance Committee. And on March second, I believe, or March twenty-second from the Board of Estimate and Taxation. We encourage people to come out, let their feelings be known, and make us aware of what their thoughts are regarding the operating budget and the capital budget coming up for this fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Having said that, Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Burnett?
Present.
Mr. Camacho?
Here.
Mr. Goldstein?
Here.
Ms. Majewski-Eichner?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Ayers?
Present.
Mr. Hubelmann?
Present.
Ms. Revellus?
Present.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Kites? Ms. McMur?
Present.
Ms. Alterman?
Here.
Mr. Me? Mr. Livingston?
Here.
Ms. Shanahan?
Here.
Mr. Kites? Mr. Me? We have thirteen. We have a quorum.
Thirteen present. We have a quorum. The only item on the agenda is the presentation of the budget to the Common Council, so I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Dakowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought you would make remarks, so you caught me shorthanded.
The regular meeting.
Oh, I see. Oh, special meetings. No. Okay, thank you very much. If I could share my screen now. Can everyone see that?
In a moment, we will. There we are.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So this is the mayor's recommended operating budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, here's the process we'll go through tonight. We'll talk about the budget process as illustrated by the calendar. We'll present the recommended operating budget. We'll talk a little bit about COVID and ARPA funds. And then we'll go a layer down to the recommended operating budget by department for the city. We'll talk about our unrestricted unassigned fund balance, known as the rainy day fund. We then talk about how these budgetary amounts translate into a tax levy and mill rate for each district. And then a conclusion. So the way the process works, and most of you are very familiar. We start with a pro forma budget. The budget department prepares a pro forma with numbers. Headcount is so important, payroll costs. We know everyone is either on payroll right now or is a vacancy that's been approved, and we have a dollar amount for that. The controller helps us by predicting what the numbers for each person will be for the coming year, because they may have step increases, they may have union increases. Then they put down recommended numbers for each line item and distributes them to all the departments. That happens in late October. The departments then take about a month. They look it over and they come back to us and input into our computer system their requested budgets. Budget Department and I look it over, and then we have meetings with each department to review their requests, compare it to what was in the pro forma. We then discuss it with the mayor. And he comes out with his recommended budget, starting last Thursday, last night and tonight. The Finance Committee has a public hearing on February twenty-third in about two weeks. And then they make a recommendation, and the council sets the budget cap March seventh. The BET then sets meetings with each of the departments in the next following two weeks. And then the BET has a public hearing, March twenty-second. After that, the BET forwards their tentative budget to the Common Council on the twenty-seventh. If they're with within the budget cap that was already established, there's not much more to be done. If it exceeds the cap, the council then has to vote to see if they approve the increased spending, one way or the other. The council sets the final budget cap. We're scheduling it for the eleventh, but according to statute, no later than the eighteenth. And then the BET sets the final budget and tax levy on May first. Here is the recommended budget for fiscal year twenty-four. What I'm trying to do on this slide is, first of all, give a historical perspective. So at the very top, the city local expenditures, excluding the Board of Ed, have gone from one hundred fifty-seven point five up to one seventy-six, this past current year that we're in, one ninety-six. But we're looking at relatively flat one ninety-seven point eight for the twenty-four-year budget. However, it should be noted. Get back to that prior slide. Here we go. It should be noted that there are expenses in the city's local expenditures that are on behalf of the Board of Ed. The in-kind services are those, let's say, the legal department, the accounts payable department, and payroll IT. It has gone from twelve million thirteen down to nine point five. We're estimating for this coming year, ten million dollars. We also have debt service on the bonded debt on behalf of the public schools. We pay the principal and interest payments, but it's really on behalf of the schools, and that has ranged from thirteen eight to sixteen, going up to nineteen point four this coming year. So for this coming budget year, there's twenty-nine point four million of expenditures that the city spends out of this one ninety-seven on behalf of the schools. So if you want to look at the local expenditure by the city, on behalf of the city net, it's really one hundred sixty-eight million dollars. It's going down one point six million from last year's one seventy, a little bit less than one percent. For the Board of Ed, their expenditures have gone from one eighty-five up to one ninety-eight, two oh four. Last year, two seventeen point eight. And the mayor's recommendation this year is two hundred twenty-six point six, a four percent increase. But we have to appropriately add the in-kind expenditures to get a true measure of what the local taxes are supporting for Board of Ed expenditures. So we add the same numbers, the twenty-nine point four, for a total of two hundred fifty-six million. That total local expenditure for schools has gone from two eleven to two twenty-five, two twenty-nine, two thirty-four, two forty-four, two fifty-six. This this year, on the recommendation of four percent, it's going up by eleven point nine million or four point nine percent. The second thing I just want to show on this slide is what is the allocation of local tax dollars between the city and the Board of Ed? And it's running at about sixty percent for the Board of Ed and forty percent for the city. Now let's go to this slide regarding regarding, oh, boy. Here we go. Let's just review what the city has received for COVID and ARPA reimbursements. And you might have seen this slide before. So the city had reimbursements from FEMA for COVID expenditures of about one point seven million. The CRF was the COVID reimbursement fund, which was distributed by the state of Connecticut, but it really was federal funds COVID relief. The city got one point nine million, and the schools got seven point two million, a total of nine million. The schools also got another four hundred fifty-one thousand, Office of Early Childhood. Now, the Esser grants are what the schools get from the state of Connecticut. And we have different different Esser grants. They they call them one, two, and three. The Esser three is their designation for their ARPA money. That total was thirty-eight million, of which twenty-four point eight was ARPA. We also got a small one hundred twenty-seven thousand dollar grant, and that was to help us with voting during COVID. The city got thirty-nine point three million for ARPA. The twenty-two point one million is as a city. But because the federal government also issued ARPA funds to counties, and Connecticut does not have functioning county governments anymore, the state said, we want that county money for our state, and we will allocate it to the cities based on per capita. So our allocation was seventeen point two. So we ended up with a total of thirty-nine point three million of ARPA. So the total city funds were forty-three million. The the schools were forty-five point five, for a total of eighty-eight point six million dollars, which we received either for COVID or just ARPA funds. And out of that, sixty-four point one was ARPA funds. So we were beneficiaries, and we appreciate that funding from the federal and state governments. The recommendation this year is for the public schools to have an increase of eight point seven million or four percent over last year's approved amount, two hundred seventeen point eight million dollars. That results in a recommended total amount of two hundred twenty-six point six million. We're recommending for the city an increase of one point five million or three quarters of one percent over last year's approved one hundred ninety-six point three million. The total recommended amount for the city is one hundred ninety-seven point eight million dollars. Now, doing a little bit of a deeper dive on what the city budget is by department. So we put this in order of the approved budget last year. And as you see, employee benefits was number one with thirty-eight point five million. This year, it's coming in at twenty-six point four, a reduction of twelve point one million dollars or thirty-one percent. I have a separate slide to discuss that, but that's a very big part of why we came in with only a zero point seven five percent increase. Debt service, number two last year, thirty-four, five point three million is now number one, forty point four million, an increase of five point one million, fourteen point three percent. And as we have discussed before, we are increasing the gross amount of our debt. That's outstanding. According to the records, according to our financial statements as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, we had three hundred and five point five million of outstanding general obligation debt. During fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, we make payments of principal that paid off twenty-five point nine million of that debt. But last summer, we issued eighty-two million of new money to EO debt. When you net that out, we are currently sitting with three hundred sixty-one point six million of debt, significant increase. As everyone is aware, with inflation rising and interest rates rising, a year and a half ago, we borrowed at two percent. Last year, we borrowed at three point six percent. Historically, that's still a very good rate, but it just increases our debt service, and those are the two contributing factors. So that's why it went up five million dollars. The police are number two, but they came in exactly at three and a half percent, a nine hundred sixty-two thousand increase on last year's budget of twenty-seven point five million. Public Works came in with an increase of two point four million or nine point three percent. And two major components there out of that two point four million increase, it it mostly has to do with trash, waste, and recycling. It used to be that when our trash was removed, the recycling elements were separated and sold, and we got a credit. The market for recycled elements has changed, supply and demand has reversed, and we now have to pay to have those recycled elements taken away rather than getting a credit. That increased our cost by one million dollars. Additionally, we have a new contract with City Carding for solid waste, and that went up by eight hundred thousand dollars. So out of the two point four million, a full one point eight million was because of those two items. And without those two items, their increase would have been reasonable. Fire Department went up three point four percent, below the mayor's target of three and a half. Pension plans, fifteen point seven, went up to eighteen point one, two point four million dollar increase, fifteen percent. I will also talk about that on the next slide. The rest of the budget is either very close to the three and a half percent or small dollars, because it's off a very small base. So, for example, twelve point eight percent increase on contingency was on one point three million. We normally have a one and a half million dollar contingency every year. Last year, working with the BET to make some of the changes they requested, we gave up a hundred and seventy thousand of our budgeted contingency even before the year started, and that's why the budgeted number was one point three three. Grants. We went from eight hundred ninety-six thousand to one point four million, an increase of four hundred ninety-three thousand. The reason is, this year, we are giving a grant to the Housing Redevelopment Authority of five hundred thousand dollars, which we hadn't in prior years. So that is explaining the whole increase there. The rest of the numbers are pretty reasonable. Equity and inclusion, we have a new officer. So we gave a new department and a budget, and Legislative went up fifty-six percent. That's all of you, but we're talking ninety-six hundred dollars. Let me talk about those key drivers I postponed. Employee benefits and insurance was recommended twenty-six point four, a change of twelve point one reduction, thirty-one percent. Health insurance. As we were going through our budget preparations, we discovered an error. Two years ago, the city changed suppliers from United Healthcare to Anthem. As part of that process, the Controller's Group has to set up different codes to to hold the co-payments that are made by our employees toward the health insurance. And unfortunately, the way it was set up, it was mapped to go into the Board of the Board of Ed's health insurance subaccount within our insurance fund. So that means they were getting credited for all of the co-pays from our employees. So their health insurance fund was overstated, and the city's health insurance fund was understated. The error was about five point two million, because it was two years' worth. And it made sense, because when we looked at the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two balance in the Board of Ed's health insurance subaccount, they had a balance of about five point nine million. So we talked to Lunda Smannie and the Board of Ed, and we said, five point two of that is really our funds. So we're going to transfer that from your subaccount to our health insurance subaccount. We had, I had already projected how much we needed to budget for the health insurance. This five point two million is a one-time offset, which reduces our required budget amount. OPEB, that's Other Post-Employment Benefits, primarily its health insurance benefits for retirees. In talking with our actuary, he explained, we are very well-funded in our open OPEB trust fund. The last time I looked, half of Connecticut cities do not even have a trust fund set aside. And I doubt there's anyone who has a ninety-five percent funding ratio that we have. We've been aggressively funding this trust fund the last several years to get to that ninety, ninety-seven percent funding. And we also hit very good stock market and investment returns. So when we have good contributions and good investment returns, and then there was a third factor that the usage of health resources, whether it's physicians, hospitals, or other health expenditures, was lower than the actuary had planned. And they explained to me that that has happened with a lot of their clients. Because of COVID, many people did not go out and see their doctors or get healthcare as frequently as they might have normally. So with those three items combining, our OPEB contribution this year was reduced by eight million dollars from last year. The actuary did warn me that he has seen in other cities that this bounces back a little bit, that after COVID, the retirees start going back to the doctors and getting healthcare that they may have put off during COVID. So it's not like we're down to a level that will persist going forward. There may be an increase. I doubt it will go up the whole eight million, but I would be expected for this to go up three, four million next year. But those are one-time positives that benefit us. When I looked at our workers' comp subaccount in our insurance fund, had a discussion with a different actuary who works on our workers' comp. And there is a factor in there called IBNR, incurred but not rated. Okay? So the reality is, oh, I'm sorry, but not reported, incurred but not reported. What that means is, we may have workers who have had injuries, but they haven't reported the damage, and we haven't gotten all the expenses. And it doesn't stay constant. He explained to me, someone might have been injured five years ago, and we estimated that the cost would be three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then several years later, the conditions worsen, and they need additional treatment, and that three hundred fifty thousand might now be five hundred thousand dollars. So IBNR is the actuary's estimate of the total liability that we may be facing in the future. It's one of those things that can come through at any time. And to be conservative, I wasn't sure that the amount we had in balance on that subaccount was sufficient. So I took one million from the health insurance five point two, and I plugged it back into workers' comp just so that I could beef up that buffer for the IBNR. That service we talked about, the forty point four is an increase of five point one million, fourteen point three percent, and pensions. Now with pensions, the actuary who does OPEB is also our actuary for pensions. And we had a preliminary number when he first looked at us, which would have been an increase of one point four million. But last week, just about a week ago, we had a conversation, and he said, I want you to bump that up by a million. It's just the opposite of what the retirees had. The the employees in our pensions here, primarily police and fire, intensively used healthcare and had healthcare expenditures greater than what we anticipated. And he said, the three main pensions are police, fire, and city. The city is a closed plan. There are no new entrants. New employees are on a defined contribution plan where they put money into investments. And if they go up, they go up. If they go down, they go down. But our obligation is different. We just match what they're putting in up to five percent. With a defined benefit plan, the older plans, if there are market losses or if there are additional expenses beyond what we anticipate, we have to cover them. So for the police, he said, because of their intensive usage, increase that by five hundred thousand. And for the fire, put in four hundred thousand more. The city, which only has fewer employees that have been grandfathered in, put in a hundred thousand more. So that's why the increase was two point four million, fifteen point four percent. Okay? Let's look at the rainy day fund. Now, a rainy day fund, as with any organization, we don't look at it in isolation. Okay, rainy day fund, sixty-nine point seven million, seventy point nine million. What does that mean? We have to relate it to our size organization. If we were spending a billion dollars a year, this is very small. But based on our expenditures, three hundred forty-eight million, three sixty-three, we then look at the unrestricted unassigned fund balance and then look at that ratio to determine whether that's an adequate rainy day fund. So here's our total general expenditures, historical actual through twenty-two, the current year budget of twenty-three, and the recommended, mayor-recommended budget for twenty-four. Here is the historical rainy day fund, sixty-nine, seven, fifty-eight, four, seventy-two, four, seventy-four point nine. And the way we work with our auditors, when we establish a drawdown in our annual operating budget, so the draw, we're drawing down money from the rainy day fund to help soften the tax increase for our citizens. If we do that before June thirtieth, the auditors say, we have to take that four million out of the rainy day fund, unrestricted, unassigned. We don't lose the money. It goes into a different category of fund balance called assigned. Because you've determined that you're going to use it, it's not open and available to you. So seventy-four point nine, the current year, we budgeted a four million dollar drawdown. And you know that we run a budget with balanced revenues and expenses. So if we come in on budget and we use that four million, the rainy day fund would go down to seventy point nine. This year's budget, we are planning on using six million dollars, a drawdown from the rainy day fund to soften the tax increase for our residents. So if the rest of the budget comes in, revenues equal expenses, the seventy point nine would drop to sixty-four point nine. Seventy minus the six gets you to sixty-four point nine. So now we take these rainy day balances and divide them by the total general fund expenditures. Twenty percent, sixteen point one, nineteen, nineteen point four, seventeen point one, fifteen point three. I should mention, our financial advisor and the rating agencies have informed me that the northeast of the United States is very different from the rest of the country. In the rest of the country, it's very common to have percentages of fifty percent up to a hundred percent. People know it's a buffer, it's protection, it's insurance, and they plan a way for it. But for some reason, in the northeast, we work with lower levels. So the city's recommendation is to be between seven and a half and fifteen percent. So we're at twenty, sixteen, nineteen, seventeen point one. With the six million dollar drawdown, we would be at fifteen point three percent right at the top of our recommended policy. So this is a very important consideration for the rating agencies. Have to recall that the rating agency's mission is to analyze the city's finances and to protect the investors in our bonds. And when they see a healthy rainy day fund, they say, well, if they don't make the revenue they thought, or if their expenses go up beyond what they thought, or both, well, we know we've got a rainy day fund. So we know the city could just draw down that rainy day fund to pay the principal and interest as it comes due. Consequently, this is not only insurance for the city, but very important to helping us maintain our AAA bond ready. And last, let's now translate all of the revenue and expense items to get into the actual mill rates and the average tax bill. So these are the expenditures. So these are the expenditures. Last year's budget, four fourteen point one seven. Mayor's recommend budget for fiscal twenty four, a four twenty four point four million, a blended two point four six percent increase. The recommended mill rate for by district is twenty five point four three for the first three districts, twenty five point five oh six one for the fourth, twenty five point three one five eight for the fifth, twenty four point three five seven five for the sixth. Remember, we have a core mill rate based on all the services that all six districts get. The fire services are allocated only to districts one through five because the sixth district provides their own fire service. So we back out those costs and then allocate them to these five districts. Take the costs, divide by the grand list for each uh district, and then we add up all of those changes. We do the same thing with trash. Trash is offered as a service to the first through fourth districts. And street lighting is offered to the fourth and fifth districts. Again, we carved out those expenses, and then we come up with a mill rate just for those services, but instead of allocating them to all six districts, only for the districts that receive those services. The tenth district is for motor vehicles. It is remaining the same. It's been there for at least two years, thirty point four six seven oh. And you should be aware, that is below the maximum cap that the state allows us to charge. So now that we have the mill rates, and you have the increases in mills and the increases in percentages. The low percentage increase was three point oh three in the fifth. Most of the districts are three, three to three, six. And the sixth district is six point two one percent. I should note, in the sixth district, they get a mill rate from the sixth taxing district. I speak to the controller there, and he tells me, this is the amount of money I need to raise for my budget. Please add on a mill rate charge, and I collect it for them and pass it on to them so that they can meet their budget. So that's built into their mill rate as well. We take the median home values from the two thousand nineteen grand list, and now we multiply the recommended mill rate times the median um, home value to get an average tax bill. So in the first district, six one oh eight, increase of two fourteen point three point six three percent. And you could go along and see what those changes are. Um, the changes go from two hundred one dollars to two hundred eighty, and the sixth is one thousand eighty nine. The percent increases, because the median home value used did not change from last year, whatever the percentage increase is on the mill rate, the tax bill, the average tax bill increase is the same. Okay? In conclusion, as the mayor has pointed out in his remarks, this is a balanced, fair budget with fiscal restraint affordable for Norwalk single family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackowitz. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Livingston?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Henry, so let's go look at the uh mill rates, right? Obviously, being my district, sixth taxing district, um, I'd like to know more about it. I'm not happy about it, of course. Um, so when I look at this, I I want to understand better how the district grand list and the calculation fits into this. We, when we spoke last week, I think it was, you said six TD grand list had gone down, I think you said eighteen million dollars. And I guess I'm struggling with that, given that we're using the October first, what, two thousand nineteen grand list for everything else. How does that factor into this?
We are we are not using the two thousand nineteen grand list. We, we're using the grand list for the median home value. Okay? And remember, that's a median, and that um, you know, individual taxpayers will have different numbers based on um what their actual assessed value is. So uh, as I said before, the core which the sixth district gets with everyone else went up because we have an increase in our spending. That's number one. The second component of your mill rate is for the sixth taxing district. Last year, that mill rate for the sixth taxing district expenses did not change. This year, it went up. So that's a second component.
But Henry, Henry, I'm gonna stop you there, because that went up eighty thousand dollars, which is roughly fifty dollars a household. So it's really not a that's what they told me from uh commissioners. So that really doesn't account for the much of the six point two one percent, right?
Well, there's a third component. The third component is that the assessed grand list for the sixth district has gone down this year. And um, Bill Ford, the assessor, explained to me there were a number of homes which have been taken down in anticipation of reconstruction. Okay? So it doesn't go down to zero because a vacant two-acre lot in Roatan has value, but it has less value than if it had a home on it. So what's happened is just as we increase the assessed value, when there are additions and positive changes made, we reduce the assessed value when it goes down. So during that construction, that homeowner will pay less taxes, their assessed value has gone down. But as most of you are aware, if the assessed value goes down, the mill rate goes up because we have to get to a certain amount of taxes to be raised. So the three components were the core, the sixth taxing district, and a reduction in the assessed value, the grand list for that district.
Yeah, I don't want to take too much time. I know, you know, there's have questions, but one more, um. The, so this is a moving target, the grand list, right? For every, all districts. Right?
Well, the grand list, let me explain. The grand list is just the sum of all the assessed values. The assessed values change during the five-year process between revaluations. If you make an addition to your home, you take out a building permit, and when you finish the construction and you have a certificate of occupancy, inspectors come in, they see what has changed, and they change the assessment. Usually, it's an increase. If, God forbid, you had um destruction of your house, or a storm that damaged it, the us, the inspectors would come and reduce your assessed value. So we haven't done the full revow. That will be done by October of this year. But the point is, again, on an individual home-by-home basis, things change, move up and down all the time.
I get that. Henry, I get that.
Okay.
I'm just trying to figure out when you're gonna nail it down, because
What do you mean nail it down? The point is
Because you have to use some date, right? You have to use some date when you set your mill rate, right?
Yes.
Right, that's, that's the date I'm curious about.
The assessor got a one-month extension, and the grand list will be filed February twenty eighth. So once the grand list is filed for the year, those are the numbers that we will use, and the movement, any other movement will be picked up in next year's revow.
But, okay, one last question. So that, when he, that's the October first grand list, right? Or is it a
What, what you're talking about?
He got the extension to do to
The October one, two thousand twenty-two grand list is normally done by January. We got one-month extension to February of twenty-three.
Right. So the February twenty-three one, it will be the October first, two thousand twenty-two, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I can't see anybody. Anybody out on Zoom uh from the council like to ask a question? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Anybody here? This, uh, DeJuski actor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Henry, a number of questions, um, starting a little bit where Mr. Livingston left off. Um, there is an increase, you know, looking in the budget book, um, of the net tax levy. Um, it looks like about sixteen million dollars, uh, if I'm reading that correctly. Um, and I'm just wondering if you could speak a little bit to where we're seeing the increases, and does any of this have to do with um some of the tax abatements on some of our larger developments uh beginning to run out?
Let me uh, let me explain how the net tax levy is calculated. It starts with the expenditures. We take the board of ed expenditures, the city expenditures, and add them up. Four hundred twenty-four point three six million is the recommendation. We need to have a tax levy to get that much tax money into our coffers so that we have a balanced budget. We then add to that the tax adjustments. Those are for elderly tax relief, other programs, let's say for veterans, and tax appeals. So here's a situation where we will not be collecting the money we expect because it's a designated program to benefit certain groups of people, or it's because of tax appeals. That total this year is three point six million. We add that to the departmental expenditures and say, okay, we need four twenty-four point four, and we also need three point six for these tax adjustments.
All right, Henry, let me stop you, because I think then I was looking at the wrong line. The question I'm actually trying to ask is increases in revenues. What I'm trying to understand is how much has the city revenue increased over last year? And I'm having trouble finding that line. Uh, I see the increase in the gross tax levy, or I see the number for the gross tax levy, but I'm not seeing a percentage in
Okay, if you go up a couple of blocks, there's something called other tax revenue.
Yep.
Is back tax collection and supplemental auto. Um, last year, we budgeted five point six million, and this year, we're budgeting five point six million. On the non-tax revenue, right below it, it's about six lines worth.
Uh huh.
Last year, um, that was forty-five point eight million, and this year, it's thirty-seven point eight million. That's mostly composed, that's a reduction of seven million. That's mostly composed of the fact that we're not going to get ARPA monies this year into our budget. The third component is the fund balance transfer. That's the drawdown from the rainy day fund. This year, we budgeted four million. For this coming two thousand twenty-four year, we budgeted six.
What page are you looking at uh in the, in the budget books?
Uh, can you explain what, what page in the book it is?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the first section. It doesn't actually have a page number on it. It's in the, it's under the budget message section. It's the last chart in that section, so right before tab two, city profile.
Roman numeral uh
Is that a Roman numeral one? Basically, the last couple pages of Roman numeral one.
Great, thank you.
Um, so Henry, but I guess I'm, I'm asking just, I think, a simpler question. So if I'm looking at the gross tax levy correct uh line, it looks to me like we are estimating an increase in the gross tax levy of forty-four million. Is that correct?
No. The gross tax levy um, in the middle of the five columns is the final budget for fiscal twenty-three.
Yep, at four hundred and twenty-two million.
Right. The middle column right next to it, this four sixty-six, that's what was requested.
Oh, I see. The four thirty-three is what's recommended.
Four thirty-three is recommended, so we're looking at ten and a half million.
Okay. So what I'm trying to understand is that we have had a lot of growth in our grand list, correct? Um, now I know that some of that growth has still, is still under tax abatements, and so, for instance, the mall has not fully come online. You know, some of the housing, uh, the apartment buildings have not fully come online. But what I'm trying to understand is what amount of additional tax revenue are we seeing as a city that is coming from new development? Um, and not just from sort of increases in taxes on our existing homeowner population.
It's, I don't think of it that way. It's not like we send an invoice and some people are paying more. What happens is we back into those numbers. There's no line item for real estate taxes and personal property taxes. What happens is we calculate this formula to get to net tax levy. That's what we have to get to get a balanced budget. We then say, okay, how do we tax everyone in the city? And real estate taxes and business personal property taxes are at the same mill rates. So we take the assessed value for all the real estate and all the business personal property, put it together, divide that into the net tax levy, and we get mill rates and average tax bills. Okay, that's why we're doing it. What will happen is the, what will happen is if you have new construction and the assessed value goes up, right? When we had the mall, the assessed value went up five hundred million dollars. The abatement, which you keep referring to, was done as fifty percent for seven years. So they're paying as if they had a two hundred fifty million dollar structure, and they'll do that for seven years, and then they'll go back to the full value of five hundred million. Okay, so when they came on board, the total grand list increased, which means that when I look at the average for the city, if the mill rate, if the assessed value grand list goes up, the mill rate goes down. That's what happened with the revow in two thousand and seventeen, with the rebound from the recession. Okay, in two thousand twelve, right after the recession, the assessed value went down and the mill rates went up. And in two thousand twelve, it went the other way. The point is the total taxpayers have to pay the net tax levy. The assessed value is only a method of allocating the costs fairly. So when these developments go off abatement, they go up a little bit. The year that the mall came, it, it was a quirk. They didn't get their abatement for, until after the first year because they didn't get their certificate of occupancy by a certain date. So when they came on board, the assessed value grand list in that district went up by five hundred um, million dollars. So if you were in that district, remember, the same amount has to be collected, but now you have someone else who has five hundred million dollars of value who's gonna take a share of that. So your taxes will proportionally be a little bit lower.
Right, no, that's exactly what I'm trying to get at. I, I, and we, I know we're gonna get a presentation on this, but I'm just, I'm trying to draw out some of the value that we have gotten as a city from having, as you said. So I guess the way to talk about it is that the cost of these tax levies have been spread across a larger number of taxpayers who are paying potentially at a higher level. Okay? Thank you. That was all the information I was just trying to get at, is some sense of what that amount of spread is, but if it's not calculated that way, um. Okay, I have a few tiny questions, Nick questions, but I'll uh leave for other people if they've got uh, more general.
I just want to give a heads up. I guess we have six minutes before we have to recess.
Yeah.
Right, so I'm gonna look back. I'm gonna go back to those out there and on Zoom. Any questions? I guess this Rev Lewis, Mr. Goldstein, Ms. Alterman, Ms. Young?
No, not at this time, Henry. That was
Sorry, I had my hand up. I just have a quick question. Um, it may have already been mentioned, so the, um, oh my gosh, I'm gonna use the wrong words for the cannabis that's legal now, the selling of that. Have they decided what you're doing with the revenue from that tax-wise?
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, I was speaking over you eloquently.
Sorry, I didn't, I don't have it eloquently stated. I'm just curious how much of any of the money coming in from like legal cannabis sales are going to go towards um any of the school budget or anything like that for the city?
Um, I, I don't think that's been determined yet, Josh.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. There is
Okay, that's all. I was just asking if it had been
There's no, there's no retail establishments yet. There's no cannabis anything yet. We just approved rules.
Okay, that's all. I just was wondering if it had been like determined what, what you would do. Okay.
Well, the, also, the state law does have um some strings attached to those funds that kind of predetermined that as well.
I, I think what will happen is, as the rules firm up, then we can financially try to estimate what the revenue would be, and just like we did with the ARPA funds, we'll probably come back to your good folks to determine how you want to allocate it and comply with all the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, if anybody on Zoom wants to raise their hand. Okay, uh, thank you. Thank you, and I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned at seven twenty-three. Thank you.